All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, everyone, for coming to our October 22 board of education meeting. If you could join me for a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we will begin this evening with special acknowledgements in the Rye Recognition of Excellence Awards. Dr. Byrne.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here. We are pleased to begin tonight's meeting by honoring a group of extraordinary students. The Rye Recognition of Excellence Awards recognize students who have achieved great things in the arenas of academics, the arts, and athletics. Tonight, we honor eight Rye High School seniors who have been named semifinalists in the 2025 National Merit Scholarship Program and six who have been named commended students. The National Merit Scholarship Corporation recognizes outstanding students based on their PSAT scores. Approximately 1.3 million students in over 21,000 high schools automatically enter this competition when they take the PSAT in their junior year. Of that 1.3 million, approximately 16,000 students throughout the nation are named semifinalists. These students place in the top less than 1% of graduating high school seniors. We are proud of the eight Rye High students who have earned this distinction, so please come forward when I call your name. Bill Chen, and Bill unfortunately couldn't be here this evening. He has a class that he couldn't miss. Andrew Chun. So you're going to stay there a minute? Of the 1.3 million students who took the PSAT, approximately 34,000 students are named National Merit Commended Students. These students place in the top 3% to 4% of high school seniors who took the 2024 PSAT. We are very proud of the six Rye High School students who have earned this distinction. Please come forward as I call your name. Brendan Chapman, who came right from band practice. And Henry Tai. Our warmest congratulations to the students. Their success is reflective of a great deal of hard work and dedication, not only by the students themselves, but by you, their parents, their teachers, and the school community at large. And now, please allow Sarah Durman, our Public Information Officer, to take the photo of the students, and we'll be sharing the news, and then parents will have a chance to come up and take photos as well. So Sarah, you want to... Wait, you guys stay there. You're going to get your...
Well, I mean, you could tell them that. See, oh, please make sure you take cookies on your way. Those cookies were for you, so please make sure you take them. They're delicious, and if you don't eat them, I will, so please eat the cookies. All right, so we will continue on with our Board of Education meeting with our report of the superintendent, Dr. Byrne.
Good evening, and thank you for joining us for our October 21 Board of Education meeting. Said it before, but recognizing student excellence is one of my favorite things we do here at board meetings. September is always a busy month, busy time in the district, but October most certainly is as well. We've had quite a bit going on last week. First, the Rye High School Parsons Street Players put on three successful performances of Clue onstage. I know Ms. Peruccio was there in the Saturday afternoon performance. The Osborne Schaefer Air drew a huge crowd on Saturday. I heard it was one of the biggest ever with perfect weather. Mr. Hara, our new high school principal, was a guest speaker at the Rye Lions Club luncheon last week, and Dr. Murray and I were so happy to be there in attendance. And the highlight of the week, for me at least, was being a guest speaker in Mr. Brusowski's earth science classes here at Rye Middle School and discussing of the impact of weather on the Rye schools with the students. I did introduce them to some of my favorite weather apps, so parents and guardians out there, I apologize if your child is now talking about the moon phases and the tides at the dinner table.
Yes, we are.
Having an eighth grader who was in there, that is pretty awesome. I hope she downloaded the app. And the busyness continues. We're holding our first round of parent-teacher conferences at Rye Middle School this coming Wednesday, tomorrow. Teachers at the elementary schools are getting ready for their first round of conferences on November 14th, and parents in grades 1 through 8 receives reports from the first round of the NWEA assessments on October 18th. The assessments are given three times a year to students in grades 1 through 8, and they're proving to be incredibly helpful in informing classroom instruction in literacy and math, and in meeting the individual needs of our students where they currently are. These reports are released early enough so that parents have a time to review them, compose any questions they have, and take a look at that data in advance of any scheduled parent-teacher conferences. This Thursday is the annual pre-Rye Harrison Game pep rally and bonfire. This event is usually held on a Friday, but had to be moved earlier due to playoff schedules for several of our varsity teams. We actually have a lot of playoff games kicking off later this week, and we have swimmers in playoffs. We've got playoffs galore here in Rye. And then, coming Saturday, is the 97th edition of the Rye Harrison Game. Kickoff will be at 3:00 PM due to the administration of the SAT at the high school earlier in the day. We will once again be welcoming Rye High School grad and professional skydiver Jeff Provenzano, who will land on the field to start the game. It's Jeff's 30th high school reunion this year.
No way!
Yeah, that was a big driver of why he wanted to do this. So I'd say the guy knows how to make an entrance to his reunion, if we could all do such an entrance to our high school reunions. Finally, some exciting, very, very exciting construction news. Yesterday, we received final approval from New York State for the new addition at Midland School. We anticipate that construction will begin shortly, and approval for Osborne should be right around the corner. Both projects are on track for fall 2025 occupancy. And finally, as I shared with the community last evening, in June, I will be retiring from my position as superintendent of schools. It certainly has been an honor and a privilege to serve the community these past eight years. I'm very proud of all we've accomplished as a community, and I truly mean that, from parents and teachers and administrators. I think back to the, all the different committees we formed eight years ago to look at things like math and our Special Education Task Force and literacy, and so much incredible work that has come out of that and put us where we are today. And I really look forward to continuing that work through the end of June. The list is long. We've got lots to do, and I'm really excited about that work going forward. Many thanks to the Board of Education and the previous board members with whom I've worked over the past eight years. I will say that in making this decision, the terrific Board of Education and the stability and leadership and strength that this board brings to the community, which is unparalleled in other districts, and the central administration team and the district leadership team overall, is a big part of feeling comfortable knowing that we are on an amazing track and the progress will continue moving forward. But thank you. I know, Jen, you were on that original hiring committee that rainy night many, many moons ago. I'm just so grateful for having been given this opportunity. I had been an assistant superintendent, and a lot of times, districts will say, we only want experienced, seasoned people. I'm not sure my 12 weeks as a superintendent in Chappaqua counted for anything other than giving me PTSD, but from the bottom of my heart, it was an amazing opportunity for me, and I've grown so much and been given so much by having had this opportunity. So thank you. Thank you, guys.
Wow. Thank you, Dr. Byrne. We will, as a matter of procedure, accept Dr. Byrne's retirement as part of our consent agenda. We are so grateful for your hard work and your dedication that you have given to the district over the last, what will be, eight years. I think, as a point of information, it's really helpful for the community to appreciate and to understand is that superintendents typically will last somewhere between three to five years. Post-pandemic, it's probably closer to three, maybe some are four. So the idea that we have been fortunate enough to have your steady leadership for eight years, we are incredibly grateful to you for that. And, you know, I've been asked a couple of times over the last 24 hours, what is something that, you know, you really appreciate about the work that Dr. Byrne has done? And I've consistently replied, and I will reply, it is the Rye commitment, and it stands here over our shoulder. You will see it this evening in the presentations from the district level administration, and you go to any presentation that anyone gives in this district, and it is the Rye commitment, and it has created a foundation for education in the district that will last long beyond your eight-year tenure. And it is the commitment to the students to be student-focused. It is the commitment to the teachers to provide them the supports and the learning that they need to best support our students. And it's your commitment and our commitment to the community to engage and inform them about the work that is being done on behalf and for their students. We thank you for all that you've done for the system, and as our letter stated, the board will begin the process of finding the next leader of the Rye City Schools, who will be the fortunate beneficiary of all the time that you spent here, because the system that you are leaving to the next leader looks vastly different than the system you inherited, and we are forever grateful for that. So for a piece of process, once a search form is chosen, we will then, in concert with the search form, develop timelines and opportunities for community engagement. And we do really, as we stated in the letter, we appreciate the importance of this decision, and as a board, we will work tirelessly to find someone who exemplifies Dr. Byrne's leadership qualities and who will continue to help the district uphold the key tenets of the Rye commitment. And with that, there is more work ahead of us, and so we will move forward, and we will have plenty of opportunities in the later months, many later months, because the school year has just begun, and Dr. Byrne is with us until the end, and so we will have opportunities to celebrate you further down the road. So for tonight, onward and upward. So with that, we move on to one of my most favorite presentations for our assessment. Now, why is that? Is that really... Oh, no! I'm... What?
Don't we usually do it after the presentation?
Yeah, we do. It's there twice.
They're both.
Okay, never mind. Yep, assessment data presentation.
Okay, good evening. Tonight, I'll be giving you an overview of our assessment data from last school year, from spring 2024, and this is a combination of both state-level data and some of our local assessments. And I wanted to frame our conversation on data in the context of the Rye commitment and also in the professional learning that we have been doing. So in thinking about the Rye commitment, the portion that speaks to students really prioritizes an equitable and inclusive learning environment, and it also prioritizes certain skills that we are fostering within the students in terms of critical thinking and creative problem-solving and collaboration. And in order to do all of that, there are a lot of different focus areas that we have had in terms of professional learning with teachers. We've been focusing on critical thinking a lot the past three years, been thinking about what does it mean, what does it look like, how do we know it when we see it? And in addition to that, this year, we're asking all teachers to design an authentic project, because if we want students to be able to practice their critical thinking skills, we have to give them a reason to do that. And so we're looking at the tasks that we're designing that allow students to think critically and collaborate with each other. We also, in the past few years, have been focusing on math in focus at the elementary level, and we also have rolled it up into sixth grade to have a continuum of a math program as they enter middle school. We've been working on our next-generation science standards for the past five years. These have been rolling up. They're at the high school level now, and they've raised the rigor in our science courses, and we are looking to, we keep looking to redesign our courses and match our assessments to match those standards. At the K to 2 level, we've been doing a lot of work at our early, with our early reading curriculum in terms of phonics and phonological awareness. You've heard a lot about that with our partnership with the Haskins Lab, and that's helping to give our students a foundation in reading that serves them as they move through our system. We've been working on our co-teaching model across the district at all levels and looking at what are the models of co-teaching that best serve the special education students and the gen ed students in the classroom. We have brought in Spire, which is a specialized reading program at the elementary level. And then we also have been doing a lot of professional learning around MTSS, our multi-tiered system of supports, and again, that's all levels in our district, and looking at what, how do we know what kids need, and how do we know what those interventions are, and how are we progress monitoring those, which is not easy work to do, and it really takes a whole team to be able to do that well. And then, in addition, we also have been learning about database individualization, or DBI, and this is really specialized instruction for our Tier 3 students from MTSS and also our special education students. So it's really about looking at the types of approaches that we can use for all of our learners in our district and as we try to achieve the Rye commitment. And the kind of professional learning that we have been doing, we've been very creative with. You know, I think that it's important that professional learning isn't always just opt-in and that we're giving these experiences to all of our teachers, because we know that in order for students to make the progress that they need to make, it requires a certain level of skill and knowledge and expertise for teachers. So we really are committed to the professional learning that we provide. So we've taken your typical regular faculty meeting, and we flipped it, and those have become professional learning sessions for all teachers. Our conference days, sometimes we bring everyone together for one topic, but then we also balance that with choice, which are connected to our different focus areas. Our in-service courses, those are opt-in for teachers. It allows them to expand their knowledge base. Our department meetings are now professional learning sessions as well, and those are led by our department coordinators, as well as our grade-level meetings. Those are led by our grade-level leaders at the elementary level. And then in addition to that, we also have been redesigning our curriculum at the secondary level to make sure, as I was talking about with those authentic projects, that we're offering our kids really meaningful learning experiences. So, and then in addition to all of that, as you kind of got to see some of our new spaces today, we're in the final phase of a capital project, and so we are looking at our, we're designing our art and engineering spaces right now as well. And so we want to make sure we provide a learning environment that supports the type of learning that we need to be doing here, and we are doing here. And I think, you know, I'm really drawing your attention to the work that we have been doing, the kind of professional learning work we've been doing, because part of evaluating an academic program is looking at data like we will tonight to really see if what we're doing is working. And I think that you will see that the professional learning is having a positive impact on student So this slide is just really a reminder that we have multiple assessment measures, and even the, so you will see some of the data that we use, but it's not all of the data. We have our state-level data. We have the NWEA, which we'll talk about tonight, but we also have a lot of other local assessments, which are really important to instruction as well. We've got K to 5 running, reading running records, also decodable running records. We have our phonological awareness and our phonics assessments, as well as unit assessments K-12, which we've spent a lot of time redesigning as well. It's really all of those pieces that create the full picture for a student. Okay, so this is our first slide that shows the New York State ELA data. This is for grades 3 through 8, and it's the percent of students at levels 3 and 4. Level 3 is meets standards, 4 is exceeds. And so this is just comparing grade levels with 2023 to 2024. And you'll see we have some increases in grades 5, 7, and 8, and 6 with a, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, 5, 6, and 7, a small decrease in 8 and 4, and holding steady at grade 3. And if you recall, the presentation from last year, we also, you know, we talked a little bit about our data from 2017, kind of when that kind of launched all of this work, and with our reading scores back in 2017, we're in the 50s, 60s, and 70s. So this slide is a cohort comparison, so we're looking at one group of students from one year to the next, so it's also nice to see that, to see how one group is moving along. So that's the third graders in 2023 compared to when they were in fourth grade in 2024, and so on. So you'll see that every cohort has increased. And here's the same data for the New York State math assessment, grades 3 through 8. Increases across the board, except for the third grader that went down by 4%. And there's the cohort comparison for math. You see a small dip in from 4th to 5th and 5th to 6th. Other than that, they've gone up. And then here's another, this is the local data that we look at for our reading scores. This is the NWEA. You've heard us talk about it a lot, but this is for our, it's called the MAPS Growth Assessment, and it's given nationally, and so what you're looking at here is a mean RIT score, and a RIT score stands for a RASH unit. It's just a scale that NWEA uses that kind of goes across grade levels, and so you can really track a student's growth from grade level to grade, from year to year. So this is showing our fall mean RIT score for every grade level compared to the spring mean RIT score, and then the black bar is the national spring mean RIT score. So what you'll see, that we are consistently above the national mean with our spring scores, and usually even the fall scores are above the national spring mean RIT score. So this slide is showing that we're performing well nationally. And then here is the same data for math, again, performing above the national spring So here's a different graph that we get from NWEA. So when we're looking at these charts, this is really achievement data, whereas this is growth. So NWEA gives us both of these different types of data sets. Growth is really important to us. It's really important that all of our students are meeting their growth projections across our spectrum of learners. And so the yellow diamond that you see is the projected growth that NWEA tells us, that says this is where we, students should be getting to, and the blue bar is the growth we actually made. So you can see that in first and second grade in reading, we went past the projected growth target. So you want to make sure that the blue bar hits the yellow diamond essentially. And, you know, in terms of, like, you know, with the growth, that's quite high for first and second grade, so that could be all the work that we're doing with early literacy right now.
Do you have any thoughts on why, like, you know, first and second's doing really well, and then it kind of drops down?
Right. I would say that as the students become more proficient, and you can see from these charts that our students are quite proficient, it's harder to make as much growth at that point, and even if you look at eighth grades, so this chart would show that, you know, that blue bar isn't on there, and that is because if you look at this graph, they're steady from fall to spring. Why that is, is hard for me to really know for sure. We don't, I'll show you, we don't see that with math with eighth grade. They do make growth, so it's something for us to look into, learn more about. So it's something for us to, to look into, learn more about, speak more with teachers about. Because while they're reading at a very high level, you know, it could be many things. It could be, it could be fatigue of reading really long, high-level passages for them at that, at that stage of the year. This is spring of eighth grade. But, but it's something for us to think about because we should be seeing some growth there. Yes?
Have we, did you have an opportunity to look to the past to see if there was the same phenomenon for eighth grade?
It's a small, it's a small level.
Very small.
I believe what, a year or two ago, wasn't there negative growth in eighth grade in one of the years in reading?
Yes, there was.
It was two years ago.
Two years ago. With yours.
It wasn't my own, yes.
Yes.
Yes. One question, or something I just kind of think about in conversations with my own children and friends' children who have similar age children, that may be something to consider in addition to this idea of the long passages that, I will, I will say that in my house, we hear a lot of chat about, uh, NWEA fatigue. For these children who have now taken it for, when, when did we start?
This is our fourth year.
Okay, so for you, so in the middle, so right, kind of fresh out of COVID then?
Yeah.
Right?
Actually, I think the first year was quasi-COVID.
Right, so fake, you know, half COVID.
Yeah, you were going to say fake COVID?
Fake COVID.
There was nothing fake about COVID.
It's very, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm like my father right now, I apologize. Sorry, Dan. So I do wonder if that is also a piece of this, in that I know I will hear things in my house, like, I can't believe we're doing this again. Is it really even necessary? What, what good is it? So I do wonder if that's another function of it.
It could be a piece. We do hear those comments from students as well, so.
They really don't care about.
They really are not interested in taking the NWEA at the end of eighth grade, which is an interesting challenge for us.
Well, and I'm hearing this before we've reached the spring of eighth grade. So I certainly, I think, kind of like by middle school almost, it was, and, and I do wonder, I mean, I, I think to see the sixth grade growth is wonderful. And then to see no negative, you know, that in seventh, what is their real value that we are getting then from this data set that tells us we should continue it as a practice as a district? I think perhaps that's something else to just consider.
Right. Usually you want to make, you always want to triangulate data. So are the data points matching? Do we have other data that would suggest that our students aren't making growth in reading? I'm not sure that's accurate, so it's a good question.
Well, and I know that, I feel like in the past, we've talked about, and if I remember it correctly, NWA only has three administrations. You cannot do less than three throughout the year. So, I mean, that would be probably helpful if we weren't doing three, like from the fatigue standpoint.
You could, you could not do the end of the year one, and you could do a beginning and a mid, just so many weeks have to go by to get a growth score. You just wouldn't get a growth score at the end of the year, I suppose.
Right. It's just, I think it's just things that now that we're in this position where we've done the administration for a set of period of time. How do we want to, you know, look at how this data is playing out and what is it giving us?
Right. And ideally, what this is giving teachers is, you know, instructional pathway for students. And so we want to make sure that they're using it and that they find it helpful as well. So again, good conversations to have. They might look at that and say, this isn't even matching. The student is a much more capable reader than this. Maybe they didn't do their best on that, or they didn't put the effort in, they could have, might be a comment, but. Here's the math growth for that same chart. You know, again, that we saw, I think last year, we saw really nice growth in sixth grade math too, and that with the, with the Math in Focus going up there, that could be a data point.
Because now this is the second full year of Math in Focus in sixth grade? And so I do, I mean, that's a considerable growth hit in sixth grade, which is great.
And I would think, I'm pretty sure that's the cohort that started, they were either first or kindergarten at this point. It's pretty.
They were in sixth grade? Or this is last year?
This is last year, or maybe they were second. They were either first or second grade. So it's been a while.
Been a long time, yeah.
It was before COVID.
Yes, because Morgan piloted it when she was in second grade. So the third grade is when it would have been implemented, but that was when COVID had.
Right.
All right. And so the next slide shows the science assessment. So this, this is a new science assessment. So this is the first year that we, we gave a science assessment that was connected to the new science standards. Just because, just as the new science standards are very rigorous, this assessment also was rigorous. And, and so you see that in grade five, we had 68% of our students proficient, and in grade eight, 81. Just to give you a little bit of comparison data, across the state, fifth grade was at 35%, and eighth grade was at 34%. So we did remarkably well in terms of the state. I think that it's, it's something that we want to continue to get better at. As we, in the middle school, we're developing these new science units and making sure that our assessments are aligned to what the students will see at the end of the year. We will keep working towards that and, and making sure that our assessments are aligned. You are probably aware, we have a new science program at the elementary level this year. And so far, it is going extremely well from feedback from teachers. The students are very engaged. So we're implementing it with fidelity as well. So we're getting a lot of science instruction in, and during the elementary day. Those, that program also comes with assessments that are aligned to these new standards as well. So my hope is that, you know, with our current fifth graders, even though they're just having one full year of it, we should be able to see an increase when they take the test at the end of this year.
Tricia mentioned the comparisons to the state. You may recall that we often are able to talk about the comparisons with other local districts, and we use School Meter, which is a platform that enables us to do that. School Meter won't be coming out with their, what they call their head-to-head comparisons for another few weeks, right? Sometime in November. It's just based on when they receive the full data from across the state to be able to run their modeling on that. So we'll certainly get back to the board with that information when we have it.
Okay, and then we move to the regions. These are our regions we gave last spring, and the percent of students scoring at level three and above. Got living environment, earth science, algebra one, English, and global. So our students perform quite well on the regions. And then we have our AP results. So we list the subject, total exams, percent of three or more, percent of four or more, and then the average score.
Tricia, Tricia, the, what, what is the categorical difference of a three versus a four?
It is, a three is qualified, if that's what you mean. A four is well-qualified. And a five is extremely well-qualified. Is that what you're, does that answer your question? Okay.
Yes, that does. It's an interesting category.
It's the college board, it's not us, but.
So qualified, extremely qualified? Well-qualified.
Well-qualified.
Then extreme.
And then extreme. All right.
And then here's the second page of that data.
So another question, do we have any sense, I know there's so much has changed since, in the last 20, 30, 40 years in college. Do we have a sense of what the percentage of universities and colleges that are actually taking AP, because it has to be a score, you have to be well-qualified or extremely qualified?
Depends on the school.
Or you used to have to be?
Depends on the school.
Right? And do we have any sense of what that looks like these days?
You know, it's really hard to answer that. I think it totally depends on every school. There's not really a percentage that I would be able to give you every school. Some schools take three, a score of a three, four, or five. Some schools only give credit for four or five. It is.
But one big shift is, in the old days, if you had a certain score, whatever that school's cut was, it would reduce the actual credits you'd have to take as an undergraduate. That rarely happens now. So if they accept it and it goes on your transcript, they often require you to take additional credit. So the business of college has sort of shifted away from that. And I recall a few years ago, talking with someone who was not happy when they learned that, because they, as a, it was a parent here in Rye, they as a student had taken so many AP courses that it reduced what they had to take in college. It was like 11 or 12 AP courses that this individual had taken as a high school student. And their child was only given, I remember it clear as day, one AP class. They reduced by one, even though the child had taken eight, nine, whatever it was that we had to offer here. So it's a different ballgame in that regard.
And then a follow-up to that would be, do we have a sense of how many of our students are taking APs but are not sitting for the exams? Because I have heard parents say, and don't really say, my kid is opting out of taking the test. They wanted to take the class, but they know they're not going to get college credit for it, so they're not bothering.
We have a longstanding practice of, if you're enrolled in the AP course, you sit for the AP exam. Yeah, so, so all of our students do take the AP exams. And this, this final slide just gives some historical data to the number of AP candidates we have every year, the number of exams taken, and the percent scoring three or higher. So there is a nice jump this year, from the 79% in 2023 to 85 in 2024. So some key takeaways, I think, for us is that when we look at all of this data, that our students overall are performing well, achievement-wise, in both academic achievement and academic growth. We're making incremental growth on those New York State assessments. And, and I think we're, and we're holding it. Whereas before I said, you know, back in 2017, we're in the 50s, 60s, and 70s, we're holding it, you know, mid-upper 80s and going into the 90s, which is, which is wonderful. The, the student growth, I think, indicates that our professional learning efforts are having a positive impact overall. And I think specifically in the area of early literacy, where we also have that local data that's really pointing to that as well. And then just something for us to think further about is that we really need to analyze the impact of our new science curriculum at the elementary level and make sure that we're using our local data as well as that state data to know its level of effectiveness. And, and you know, it's the most difficult part about teaching, but we have to be able to push the growth of all of our students, including our high achieving students. And so when we think about the NWA and, and what it's looking like as our kids get older, how, how are we using the data? How do we keep making sure that our kids are making growth across the spectrum? So that's all. Any other questions?
I have one question about Math in Focus.
Yes.
Will you remind me, so Math in Focus, we brought to sixth grade, is it last year?
Last year.
So should we have seen those results? So we should have seen those results in the, and are we happy with, with that? And, and is Math in Focus, does it go past sixth grade? Or will it, is it going to stop at sixth grade? Do we think that we might go to seventh grade?
You know, we, we don't have any data that would say that we needed to shift our seventh grade math curriculum. I think that that, you know, that was the impetus for the sixth grade, is that we looked to, we were like, okay, there might be, might be some switches we need to make here. So we did. And, but I, I think that we're not seeing that in seventh grade.
Great. Any other questions, comments? No? Okay, thank you.
It's, as you all know, one of my favorite presentations of the year, because I think anytime we're able to look at our student data, and it's so important to analyze it in the many ways that you've talked about. And the idea that we're now at a point with data to be able to say, is this data actually helping to inform us anymore in the ways in which we needed it to? Or what other types of data points do we need to start looking at to see if this is reconfirming or questioning, or giving us reason to reflect any further? It's a great place to be as a, as a district, because it will forever help move and make those incremental changes, which is great. So thank you so much.
And I just have to get a plug in for those baby steps, those little baby steps have all accumulated quite nicely over the years.
It's going to be a long year.
Yes, sometimes baby steps, eventually, everybody learns to walk at some point, I guess, right? Enough, maybe? All right, well, thank you very much for that. Okay, we seemingly have some. I busted out my folder. All right, now it is time for the Hearing of the Public on Non-Agenda Items. We welcome and encourage our community members to address the board at this time. Please come to the podium, state your name, address, and if you are representing an organization. To ensure everyone has the opportunity to speak, please limit your remarks to three minutes. The board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion. So please understand that we may not respond to your comments or questions at this time. We take your comments seriously and may need more time to process or research an issue. We will ensure questions will be addressed by the appropriate staff member or possibly answered at a future board meeting. We will not entertain comments regarding individual students or district personnel, as these are protected under state and federal privacy laws. Please know that we take your personnel concerns very seriously. On these matters, we would ask you to follow the appropriate administrative channels. As a reminder, the community may submit written comments at any time to the board by sending Seeing no one from the public wanting to come forward, we will move on to our consent agenda. Can I please have a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda? Callie Erickson, seconded by Sean Clougher. Okay, let's take a look at this evening's consent agenda. Consent agenda general. Consent agenda fiscal. Consent agenda professional appointments. Consent agenda classified appointments. Consent agenda pupil personnel services in special education. Seeing no questions, can I have a vote to approve this evening's consent agenda? All those in favor? Seven zero, thank you. So on this evening's consent agenda, I'm very excited about this, and I hope it gets some good traction and information in the community, but we have approved the creation of a boys' and girls' bowling team. So this winter, in partnership with the Ryne X Schools, students from the Ryne City Schools and Ryne X Schools will be able to participate in bowling. It's both a male team and a female team. So students, if you're interested, I'm sure there'll be information posted in the high school. And I think it's great that we are consistently and consciously looking for opportunities to expand for our students to be able to participate in things and find and develop sense of belonging and sense of community in our schools. So I hope this takes off. Very exciting.
And just for future, I did hear from a very engaged community member today that a cornhole club did form at a neighboring high school. So we're going to have to run that down. That individual might be willing to do some volunteer coaching as well.
Community service hours? I certainly, as you know, I'm a big proponent of pickleball, but that's for not the consent agenda. So moving on, we have an acceptance of the gift from the Midland PTO in the amount of $19,267.15 for the installation of a wall ball court. And as you all know, I cannot say enough wonderful things about giving our students opportunities to move those big muscles during recess and other times during the day, as it only helps to impact their ability to maintain and sustain their attention. And as a former wall ball player, I'm quite excited for the Midland students to have that opportunity, because it's a really fun game. It's like one of my highlights from elementary school. I will, you will not find me there, but just saying, I hope it gets good use. We also have an agreement to use Playland ice for our Ryne High School hockey team. And we are so fortunate to have community and county facilities, which are so close, and we are able to use them to support our students' interests. Very exciting that we have an appointment of a speech and language pathologist for Milton School, which hopefully brings us ever so closely to closing the books on, almost for the hiring season of 2024, 25. We also, this is great, we have an appointment for a sixth-period assignment for our career and vocation teacher. And this is due to having an increased number of students who are participating in our BOSI's programs. Again, it is so wonderful to see. Again, it is so wonderful to see the district continuing to support our students in vast and varied ways of learning and interest. And the idea that we are able to commit to our students in a multitude of ways is just really exciting, and so this is great to see on here. In addition, as we spoke, we accepted Dr. Byrne's retirement. Much less excited about that. And not on this evening's consent agenda, but on the previous consent agenda, we accepted the retirement of Donna Sorkin. And unfortunately, due to timing issues, we were not able to formally acknowledge Ms. Sorkin's retirement, so I will do so this evening. It is a sadness that I announced the retirement of Ryne High School Athletic Department Assistant Donna Sorkin after 10 years in the Ryne City School District. She will be retiring effective December 1st of this year. Donna came to the Ryne City School District in 2014 as an office assistant in the district's business office, working in accounts payable. In 2017, she moved to the high school to become the assistant to the athletic department. In this role, she has worn many hats, including communication with athletes' families, helping with family ID registration, communication with coaches and athletic trainers, scheduling and confirming officials, scheduling team transportation, which has not been easy the last few years, team budget requisitions, and award submissions and distributions. In 2022, Donna was named as one of two recipients of the Section 1 Athletic Administrative Assistant of the Year. Each year, the New York State Athletic Administrators Association recognizes each section in New York with this award, known as the Judith A. Martin's Secretarial Award of Excellence. The award is presented to a secretary of an athletic administrator who has demonstrated outstanding contributions to athletics at the level for a minimum of five years. It says something that Donna received this award the very first year she was eligible. Prior to coming to Ryne, Donna was an administrative aide in the Building Department of the Village of Portchester. She began her career working for the New York Telephone Company and later AT&amp;T Information Systems in White Plains, and served in a variety of customer service, sales, and management positions. Donna has a BA in Psychology from SUNY Regents College and an MBA in Management Information Systems from my own college's Hagan School of Business. Director of Athletics Susan Reed-Dulay said of her, Donna is the consummate professional. She collaborates with teachers, coaches, students, and of course, the entire sports community. She is always there to support the community with caring and integrity and character, accompanied by a kind, warm voice and a perpetual smile. She will be much missed. We wish you, Donna, all the best in your retirement. We will now move on to information and discussion. Policy, policy, Ms. Boyle.
Thank you. So tonight, we have two policies to take a look at. I'm gonna go in opposite order, because that's the order in which it's going to make sense for why the changes were made. So we're gonna look at non-resident students, 6254, first. So this, this policy, we started actually looking at back in the spring. Um, and we're taking a look at the, the numbers of students that we've had for, that were non-resident students and paying tuition to come to the district, and, and then looking at like how other districts around us are handling it. And we came to the, to the conclusion that it didn't make sense to continue on with the practice that is, is stated in this policy. However, we do still have some students that are finishing up as tuition students currently. So what we, what we are proposing is to indicate within this policy a date by which, which we'll choose the date we actually adopt it in our future meeting, where we'll be no longer accepting applications for non-resident students for tuition payment. This will remain on the books to be a guide for any of the students who are continuing through our system, and they will either continue through to graduation, or when they decide to not continue to apply for, for the next year. So that is really the main change for this policy. Any questions? No?
How many students do we currently have?
Pardon?
How many students do we currently have that it is?
Is it nine? I think it's about nine.
Yep.
So Jen, just to clarify, so this stays on the policy as it is, and we're adding this green line?
Adding.
Until the ninth student leaves?
Yes.
And then we will, again, then revise this policy?
What we will do at that point, we would rescind it.
Yeah.
Um, and I'll show you how we're going to also account for that in the next policy we look at.
Thank you.
Okay. So the next policy is Policy 5150, which is student admissions. Um, this, we looked at because we were reviewing non-resident students. And, um, what you will see, there's two main changes to this policy. I'm gonna direct you a little further into the language. There's a, um, a whole section that has been added called student attendance, or school attendance areas. So what happened is, as we were reviewing this, we then looked at another policy, which was 5110, which was school student, or, ah, school attendance areas. Um, and this is a, it's not a required policy. And the information that it speaks to, which is basically where you're going to attend, based on where you live in the district and any other elements that play into that, uh, we felt it was beneficial, since we were looking at student admissions, to incorporate this information into student admissions, because it didn't need to be a standalone policy. And, um, we could then address everything that we understand to be prevalent or pertinent to attendance, I mean, admissions, all in the same policy. So that's the green that you'll see that's added on Pages 2 and the top of Page 3.
So a question about that, and that starts off with the district.
It should be, it should be board. Sorry, that was not updated, but that's my, that's, we'll make sure that's updated.
Okay, so we'll say the board establishes.
Yes, yes.
Great.
Um, so the last, uh, green sentence that you'll see in the last edition, before we get to the categories of new resident or leaving district, is to help us account for the students that will be going through the system for several more years, to say that any new applications for non-resident students will only be considered in these following circumstances. Either you're moving into the district, you haven't signed a, a contract for a house yet, and you, but you want to start the school year, those are those situations. The other is, if you are leaving mid-year, that would be another opportunity. If someone did not want to leave mid-year, they could pay tuition throughout the rest of the year. The rest of the deletions are to update the fact that we are not going to point anyone to the non-resident student policy anymore, because it won't be eligible. And then we also updated this to remove international students, because we previously rescinded that policy as well.
Okay, so, couple of questions.
Yes.
The school attendance areas, that was a standalone policy with the exception of the last sentence.
Yes.
Is, was the policy, the school attendance policy rolled over in whole?
Yes, pretty much, except for an introductory section that said, you know, we believe in...
Yep, yep. Understood, so the, the heart of it was. And so the school attendance areas policy will be rescinded upon approval of this entire policy?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, so now moving into the leaving the district, the strikeout that refers to grade 12.
Yes.
So am I correct in assuming that current, our current policy states that if you are a senior in the high school and your family moves out of district in January, that you do not have to pay tuition?
That is correct.
And this policy change would indicate if you, upon approval of this policy, if your family moves and you're a senior in January, you will have to pay tuition?
So what, yes, correct. What this would do is, regardless of what grade you are in.
Got it.
You will, if you want to remain in the district, there will be a prorated tuition payment.
And the, the recommendation to change that portion of this policy?
Uh, part of our discussion was that it doesn't really account for if there's a sibling.
Okay.
It really was speaking only to one, an individual student in the 12th grade.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so we felt that that was unclear and, and made it a little bit, um, it would, would make it operationally challenging if there was a sibling to then say, oh, you know, well, we'll accept your sibling as well as the 12th grader, which, which was not the intent, at least based on this language, in the policy, which didn't seem to make, it, it didn't seem to make it a very clear set of information. So that was why we chose to just remove it completely.
No, I think that, that, thank you for that explanation.
Sure.
Very clear. And the, the language related to homeless children is part of a federal policy, correct? Related to, it's the McKinney?
The McKinney Vento.
Yes. Act.
Yes.
Got it.
And all we did is, since we will not be accepting non-resident students, we removed the language that talked to, referring to that.
Yep. Great.
Anyone else?
Uh, just as a, so, uh, we're in the veteran language?
Mm-hmm.
Second sentence.
Mm-hmm.
A non-veteran?
Oh, there needs to be a space.
Probably a space.
Yeah. Thank you.
Of course. I assume that this veteran of any age must be a resident? Do we need to explicitly state?
I would assume the same, since this is, um, specific to the district.
Mm-hmm.
We could certainly add language if we feel it's...
Yeah, I don't know. I would...
Unclear. This has been in here. We haven't touched that.
Yeah, no, no, I, I realized.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's one of those, you know, it comes up, and then all of a sudden, it's, you know, you can see everything. You see all the, all the questions being on, you know?
I know.
In 2017, nobody saw it, but in 2024?
Here we are.
That's what happens. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions, comments? We just blather on up here.
Okay. So we will make those changes, um, and bring it forward for a second reading at our next meeting.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, communications to and from. Uh, clearly, there was a policy meeting, we just heard about that, but I'm excited to hear about our curriculum council meeting that happened on October 16th.
I would be happy to provide an update.
Oh, all right.
We had a wonderful discussion that Dr. Murray led. Actually, it was my first, so I was able to, to sit in, and I guess what I enjoyed was, you know, it had community members, it had educators, it had students, actually. And I'd say that students were highly engaged and had lots of questions, and were very keen to find how these, the, the IB update and the AP seminar, how those would fit into their current, current curriculums. So Cody Bloom gave us an update on the IB program, and Mary Ellen McGuire gave us an update on AP seminar. It's actually interesting to, to learn, um, I think, the, the students' feedback around the IB programs, that their expectations for the demand is probably higher than what we had originally forecasted. So, uh, shout out to the, the, the class, the classes, uh, the class offerings. And, um, I guess the first business management course will be offered, which sounded pretty neat, and Digital Societies also, was one of the ones that stuck out to me. And then we, we learned a bit about AP seminar, which is really just something that enhances the current AP offering, and I guess it's a bit more of an open-ended, project-based learning, certainly not something that I had, or we probably had with, with the AP curriculum many years ago. But it was, it was a, a great update, and, um, and, yeah, look forward to, to, to learning more.
Okay, great. Um, yes, I know that there is lots of excitement, having had a student who's able to consider the IB offerings, and so there's definitely lots of chatter going on in the high school about it, it's very exciting things. Okay, in addition to our committee updates, Dr. Byrne, did you have a?
Sure, just a quick note. As, as the board is certainly aware, just to share with the community, we have been in discussions since the early part of September with the city government to issue a joint statement on gun safety storage in compliance with the New York State laws. And so, um, as the board had seen the final document last week, so tomorrow night, the city council will be considering moving forward with issuing that as well, and it's suspect, I suspect that that will happen. And our plan is to send out the joint statement on Thursday morning to the community after city council discusses it tomorrow night. But it's a really strong statement from both the city and, and the school district on the importance of following gun safety laws, and has some very specific information for residents and school families on where to get more specific information and research and assistance from Ryne PD if necessary. So thank you to Greg Usri and the elected officials on the city council for moving forward with this, this year.
Yes, great. We're excited, as Dr. Byrne mentioned, these are existing laws that are on the books, and so it's a great opportunity to inform the community, both the school community, as well as the community at large, about the responsibility that we take as adults in taking care of our, our schools and our community at large. So any other communications to and from the board? No? Okay. So we have our next board meeting scheduled for November 12th. We are, we will not be meeting on November 5th, because that is Election Day. So we will have three weeks in between our meetings. Um, and I have on my tickler that it's gonna be literacy. So it should be a great conversation. So I look forward to seeing everybody in three weeks. Can we have a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting? Oh, look, everybody's ready to go. Okay, I guess that was a message. Matt Shippenoff, seconded by Sean Clapper. All those in favor? Seven, nothing. Thank you, have a good night.